Streets on walking path, not because I'm concerned I'm gonna get down. I'm concerned they're gonna come across me. They're not gonna flood them. So that's why I slow down.
That's exactly right. And and you wouldn't do that if you were traveling at a speed that you didn't have that fear. So that's your behavior.
I slow down to about ten or fifteen when I see those people. I just do. Years ago, everybody. We're all careful. The demographics have changed.
Yeah, so so I'll just say my my intention, and I I noticed that we're combining these there. I completely understand there's like traffic studies, eighty fifth percentile processes that that cost a lot of money, take a lot of time. But we'll get it. And um, you know, I'm personally uh, just willing to say that I'm comfortable with a little bit of speed limit that's lower. So I want to hear feedback that I don't just flood out flood the oxygen.
I don't know, but I saw a report in, you know. I know nobody likes this, but I still like the cushions. It's always, well, they're gonna speed up after they had the cushion. Where you put enough cushions, they're not gonna be able to speed. You're not gonna be able to give everybody a ticket. If you want people to slow down, you have to put something in their ways. And I, you go around Austin, there's a lot of speed cushions out there. Not the not the big bust, the cushions. And they've got them over all over Southwest Parkway. Yeah, where you take a radiant turn to go down that road and speed cushion. You're going, you have to go slow. You don't have a choice. Me, if you wanna slow people down, you have to put something in their way.
I think we don't own the streets. So that's not something that we would do. What we can do is we can reduce the speed limit in an inappropriate fashion. And so I agree with the, I, my opinion is that we should reduce the speed. Um, when this neighborhood was established long ago with the thirty mile per hour speed limit, the houses were further set apart. The walkway, walking trail did not exist. Um, the community was just completely different. It was a sleepy golf community. No, no, I didn't say that. Now it is an incredibly active community. Um, and with those are data points that we just, we won't have a comparison for from then to now. Um, we actually, you know, uh, did look it up and we are not required to do any study by reducing to twenty five miles per hour. Even though we are in an urban district, but we are less than four lanes and you're not a safe pathway. Um, so that is not something that is, that I found to be a requirement of moving forward with this. Um, I, you know, driving around in other communities, you know, even Falcon Head, they have similar-ish streets, but they also have two sidewalks along both sides of their street and they're twenty five miles per hour. We currently have the same speed limit as Serene Hills, which has a massive need. Um, so I just. You look at all these different comparisons.
That's right, it was thirty.
With that backside right there, when the windy part it is, I think so she's referring, yeah, you're you're right. On the windy part right behind us is thirty five.
Thirty five, the interior streets, yeah.
Interior is thirty, and there's two.
Why I agree with the interior streets because thirty going down slow now is crazy. It kills somebody.
Well, yeah.
Well, let's see, maybe I can help this along a little bit. So uh, I'm the one that sponsored uh, item H, which is uh, to, instead of changing the speed limit, let's set up a process for evaluating whether and how we should change the speed limit. I'll just say, I'm not necessarily opposed to reducing the speed limit. I just don't think we have enough information to make an informed decision on behalf of all our residents to do that at this point. So instead of saying, let's change the speed limit right now, my thought is, let's put up some radar speed signs that will give us some data points over a period of a few months and evaluate two things. One, whether those speed signs that warn drivers and caution them to slow down, whether they're affected in reducing our speed limits down to where we want them to be. And if not, when are we seeing speeding in the neighborhood? Uh, you know, what times a day, what um, what areas of the neighborhood are we seeing speeding and how much are people speeding? Uh, so I I just don't think we have enough information as a group now to make an informed decision on this because it's changing a really, really longstanding practice. Our speed limit's been thirty ever since the city was incorporated because that's the state default speed limit for us. And and let me finish here, okay? And I realize that we now have the authority under state law to reduce that uh, speed limit down to twenty five from the thirty default speed limit. We've had that authority for a few years. Uh, but anything below that would require a traffic study. So I agree, yeah, we don't have to do a traffic study and get it down to twenty five, but we do have to make a finding that thirty mile an hour speed limit is under the words of the statute unreasonable or unsafe. And I just don't think we have enough information at this point to say that. So I'd say I'm I'm not opposed to reducing the speed limits for some some of our streets or all of our streets. But I'd like for us to have enough information to make an informed decision. And if it turns out that we conclude that even twenty five is too high in some areas, we'll at least have the authority then to lower it below twenty five because we will have gone through the steps that state law requires us to go through.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. So if we go to twenty five miles an hour and we find that it doesn't change anything, then what?
And and I'll just say too, Rick, my take on the whole issue is that the primary concern that we're all expressing, and and by the way, I I'm really grateful to the members of the council who kind of raised this issue to our attention level, particularly you Matt, I really appreciate you bringing this forward and putting it on the table for all of us to consider. But to me, the real problem that we have is we have too many people speeding too often. And I don't know that reducing our speed limit on the signs down to twenty five is really gonna change that very much. So I'd like to look for some more effective solutions on enforcement uh, as well as evaluating, are these the right speed limits to start with? So that's that's kind of my approach. And with that, I'm just gonna say I'm gonna move approval of of the resolution that's in the backup for item uh, seven H uh, to adopt a process is defined in that rel- uh, that resolution for evaluating and making appropriate changes to the speed limits within the city. My way of thinking that would give us enough data, make an informed decision, and it will give us the statutory authority to set the speed limits for really where we want them to be. And if there's a second on that, we can talk about it more. If there's not, then I guess we could.
How how many radar devices would we need out there?
Who's gonna do the study?
I don't know. I don't know. Come at the end because we're not at that point yet. But I'd like for us to be able to engage through the state purchasing cooperative with one or more vendors of these radar speed signs and get their thoughts on where would we put the signs in the neighborhood? Be able to track the kind of and capture the kind of data that we're looking for. I don't know the answer myself. And frankly, I don't know that either. I don't know.
My next question is, we had signs at one time that told you what your speed limit was. Were those city signs or was that the P O A?
I don't know.
They are our signs installed on P O A.
Okay, cuz we had, they were ten thousand dollars each, if you wanna know what the call.
Do we, do we have the right of way to put these radar signs on? Do we have the property in the designated areas? And who's gonna perform the consulting? How long does it take? Who's gonna perform the analysis?
I don't know the answer to any of that because we're not at that point yet. What I'm into right now is trying to see if we can set up a process for answering just those questions. I think they're important questions. And if it turns out, you know, we decide, wait a minute, this costs way too much, or we can't make it happen in a way that gives us the kind of data that we're looking for, all right, we'll do something else. But I'd at least like for us to be able to capture enough data to make an informed decision on the issue. Because it's changing a longstanding practice that has existed throughout the history of this community. And as best I can tell, we haven't gotten any input from the P O A who actually owns the streets on this at this point. So I don't know what their thought is, but to me, they'd be a fairly important stakeholder. And I also see that through the, and granted, they're unscientific, but the informal surveys and polls that various people have taken uh, show me that there's a lot of mixed feelings about this within the community. And before I would be comfortable making a decision on behalf of the whole community, I'd like for us to have a better database and information. That's my pitch.
I'll second that. I'm in the same camp. I think uh, that would that would be a more thoughtful approach.
I'd like more information.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I have no idea. Within the resolution, there's no information about the study itself, who these consultants are that you're leading to.
I don't know if we need consultants. I mean, if we get data and the data shows that, you know, thirty five percent of people are speeding down Hill Drive, we can pretty much make a decision based on that. But then it still gets to the next question, and that is, how do you enforce it?
Right. Well, the 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 problem, the problem that I find in doing a half-baked traffic study and not a real traffic study.
But we don't have a traffic study.
Well, what what's being proposed is a traffic study without a traffic study.
Yeah.
So, so.
I want a traffic study. If we're gonna do it, I want a traffic study.
That's that's kind of the opinion I have is this resolution that that's being proposed here is not a tra- is not a real traffic study. It's, it's let's, you know, go send some radar things.
I want more data. Okay, I don't, I'm not going to twenty five because somebody thinks the right thing. Or you read a report that says it may be doing that. I would like to know personally, how much speeding do we have in this? And and those radar things will give us that, you know, we'll know the percentage.
And and they'll tell you when, when and where the speeding is occurring. And they also have some deterrent effect, the the studies seem to indicate. But and to your point, Matt, I agree that this is, this is not creating a traffic study. Well, what it is, what it is, is it's giving us some data. And if we conclude at the end of this, wait a minute, we need a traffic study if we wanna reduce speed limits below twenty five miles an hour. We could do it at that point.
Well.
And I I would clarify that about the resolution. It's, you're right, it's not a formal traffic study, but it would give us some data that we could use to determine what should we do. Maybe what we should do is uh, engage somebody to do a traffic study, or maybe what we conclude is, well, we're fine where we are. Maybe what we conclude is we can go down to twenty five. And all of that, at least we'll have better information at that point and a a better story to tell our residents about why we would be changing a practice that's been in place for forty years in our community.
I would wanna make sure that, I agree, I am a fan of data. And that's why I made the scene that like, we cannot compare today to ten plus years ago when we established. So that's, that's gonna be just a lacking piece of information.
Right, right.
Um, that we'll have to just kind of work through. But what I don't wanna see happen is that a traffic study be done and the and the tools being used for the traffic study actually deter the speeds. Like, I wanna make sure that when we catch a speeder, he's actually speeding. It's not because I see a big old radar machine and it's catching my speed and it's, I'm automatically reducing. Like, I need, I would like to make sure that when we're capturing the speed, that it's not also the tool to read that.
Yeah, I get it.
We don't want it reduced.
Right.
But I I don't want to have the data conflict. I don't want the data conflicting.
That's what was proposed in the resolution.
I don't want the data being conflicted with.
I'd like to find out what kind of equipment they have.
So so the way, the way.
Hold on one second. I don't think we need more than one. If we can get equipment in here that says, here's the speeders, they slow down, I don't care if they slow down. I wanna know what the speed was. And there is radar equipment out there that will tell you what the speed is. That's what I wanna know. What's the speed? Certainly going downhill's drive and all of that. I wanna know what that is.
What's, what's in this resolution is not consistent with a traffic study to lower the speed. What's in this resolution is a deterrence to go place random radar signs around the community. The way that traffic studies are typically done is over a long period of time. Then hire a firm to come in, they place discreet boxes that can't be identified. They record the speed in a bunch of places around the community for a long period of time.
Hey, we don't need a long period of time. Okay, we flat out don't need, you know, we got eleven hundred homes here. We don't need a year's worth of data.
No.
Okay, if you get, if you get thirty days worth of data on speed, okay? And if they find out that there's three hundred cars that went downhill drive towards Longmont Crossing and a hundred of them were speeding, then I would say, yeah, that's too many. Okay? And and we can decide what's too many. Okay, that that's the job of the council. We can certainly decide what's too many. And then we can then address and say, okay, what are we gonna do? We're gonna lower the speed limit? Are we gonna lower the speed limit with speed cushions? What are we gonna do? Because the fact of the matter is, you're not gonna get constables writing as many tickets as you think. Okay, you're not. If Zuno didn't do it, this guy's not doing it. So if you're looking for that kind of standard from these people, it's not gonna happen. So if you're gonna have, wanna slow them down, you gotta come up with a different way to slow them down.
Well, and and to the point that you all are raising, and I think that is also articulating, it's, you're right, the my proposed resolution here uh, is to bring in some radar speed signs and decide after a period of time what we wanna do with that data. If you think it'd be more appropriate for us to change that to say, we're gonna uh, engage a traffic consultant to do a a speed analysis in our neighborhood, I'm happy to change the resolution to that. That takes care of the problem that you're identifying, that people will slow down when they see the radar speed signs and we wouldn't get a true read on how on the driving campus in the neighborhood. I get that. If that's something that would make the council more comfortable, I'm happy to change the resolution to do that. And I see, okay, Marty not, he would too. And this is a, to me, is an important issue for our community, and so I'd really like for us all to be kind of aligned on how we're thinking about it.
What I, what I, what I struggle with though is a resolution to perform a traffic study that's not a real traffic study as a means to delay a decision. And that's where I'm stuck.
But Matt, okay, I'm sorry, but, okay, you did a really good job on on your work, okay, which was basically research.
Sure.
But that's not, that's not actual studies here either. Okay?
I agree.
So I think we need to come to a compromise. And I wanna see the city spend a hundred thousand dollars doing the stuff. Okay, I think that's ridiculous. If we get enough of the data, that should tell us, okay, there's a lot more speeding than we think. Because if you don't leave the community, and I don't leave the community a lot, I, a lot of times I don't, I don't see people speeding, okay? And that's because where am I going? I'm going to the golf course, or I'm going to the club, or, you know, I'm on my golf cart more than I'm in a car. But I do know from stone that I do see people speeding, but only once in a while because I'm not out there. I always see landscapers speeding, you know, always. And I always see the trucks come into the club, always speed. Now, is this gonna prevent that? I don't know. But I would like to get it prevented one way or the other. And and my deterrent for years has been the same thing. People don't want, you know, cushions, it's too noisy. Yes, you you don't, you don't want them speeding, but you're not willing to do anything about it, essentially.
That's where we're at today.
And the stop signs are not working. I mean, Apple Green and Hills Drive, nobody stops at that stop sign. Nobody.
Sounds like we need to schedule our.
They don't even do a tap.
Time course, anyone can have three officers at one time.
They don't even do a tap.
And and so uh, man, as I say, I I'd be happy to reword the resolution so that it says, instead of, we're gonna have some radar speed signs, we'll do a traffic speed, we'll commission a traffic speed analysis.
Blind one.
Yeah.
But my, what I'm trying, my concern is that we we had this conversation two months ago, and we're still talking about hypotheticals about bringing in radar signs and then getting some data, but we don't know how much data. We we don't know how to interpret the data correctly. So the ju- traffic study does.
Okay, so you wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars on a traffic study? Well, well, there's, do you want us to then?
Yeah. There's two, there's a choice to make. This is the choice.
I only have one question for you first. Do you wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars on a traffic study? Yes or no?
If we cannot come to um, a majority to lower the speed limit to twenty five.
Okay.
So there's, there's two.
The first thing we have to do is, first thing we have to do is we have to get a resolution to spend about a hundred thousand dollars on traffic study and see if that passes.
So so the law is really clear on how this this happens. Um, you have to make a judgment that the streets are not reasonable, which is what I'm suggesting, that we place the walkway next to a twenty three foot wide street and ask people to walk with their backs to the street to the point at which cars are actually swerving into oncoming traffic as they pass a walkway.
How often does that happen?
Every day.
How often every day?
I mean, pretty much every time I drive by someone walking, I take the effort to slow down or swerve around. When I'm walking, I see the same behavior.
Okay.
So I'm, there's two, there's two choices here. Is you perform a traffic study to result in an assessment by a third party to decide the appropriate rate of speed on the road. Or you can make a judgment of that speed being uh, unreasonably fast and you can lower it to twenty five.
Right.
The the, what we're trying to do is create a third option that's not in statutes or Texas code.
Here's the problem. Who's making the judgment that it has to go to twenty five?
That's the result and findings of the traffic study. Because what they do is they analyze speed of traffic.
I understand.
They take an eighty fifth percentile measure.
My question.
They look at enforcement to that measure.
Who's making the judgment now that we have to go to twenty five?
I'm willing to.
Okay, you're willing to. And you're willing. Is anybody else willing to? Should we make a motion to go to twenty five and see if it passes?
There's already a motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor is the resolution.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm moving the adoption of the resolution seven H, which, as I say, I'm I'm happy if it will it will help us reach consensus to modify, say, that instead of bringing in radar traffic signs, that we uh, we commission an analysis of traffic speeds within the neighborhood.
The traffics.
Okay, so you don't want them. You you want G and H separate.
Uh, that's, that's why I submitted it that way, but Mary made the decision to have I'm, that's, that's great.
Okay, well, I don't think we could buy them if we're not getting. It would seem inconsistent, but yeah, yeah. Yeah, and if we're not getting consensus to do that, that should have been the first consensus, I think, was everybody in agreement, we should buy G and H.
The the problem I have is, is just fundamentally, there's two paths we take.
I understand.
It's the judgment path or it's a full-blown traffic study to to make the decision for the council.
I understand.
Which, we did do a traffic study in twenty seventeen twenty, and that cost of that traffic study was around, it was less than twenty thousand dollars. So I don't want the hundred thousand dollar figure to be too.
Right, and and Greg is is putting facts up here, and and this goes back to the judgment path. So if we're gonna take the judgment call and and make a decision based on judgment that the the speeds currently and the road design and the walkway is unreasonably too fast, that's a judgment decision. The other path we take is engaging the firm to perform a traffic study.
I understand.
And that's spelled out in in in.
I agree, and in Texas code.
I I can't read what it says.
Well, this is the refer, Greg is referencing the twenty, I guess it was twenty twenty three, there was the trailer set up in the neighborhood. There is data collected and there's a speed, a spreadsheet of speeds that I think was, I guess it was twenty twenty three. Um, and then he, I mean, that's what he's referencing. He says we have that.
I think they're about stop signs.
That was, well, now it's speed.
Should be one more stop sign.
Now, we have totally separate instances. We did the the stop sign study in twenty twenty one or twenty two. And the, the, when no, when no impact was, there was no significant change in any one's habits, um, the const- the um, constable's office offered to bring out the trailers, which are a speed reducing tool. So the data on that would reflect reduced speeds. So that's where I, I'm, I I loved it, a data set. And, but I would want it to be blind so that you're not having to miss that. So I, so I think that.
That, I mean, that's, we'll let Greg, cuz I know Greg, I'll let, give you the moment to speak and then I'll say some stuff as well.
Excellent. Sure. Um, so the study was in uh, two different locations um, on the sort of the downhill slope, uh, the two downhill slopes on the hill, one by seventeen and uh, one by Plinth Rock, where the existing uh, sign is, to see if those, to see if that, the instance of that sign already being there had any effect or not. Um, it was several days of data. I encourage people to look at it. Um, the, it did take readings from both sides. So even people not seeing that they're coming up on a trailer that's that's reading out the sign, so you can, you can see it a difference in the data set for people that are, you know, coming up to what is obviously a radar sign versus coming up to the back of it where it's not necessarily intuitive that there be, it's measuring in two ways. So you can sort of see, a adjust for what people are concerned about right now that the, you know, the the Heisenberg principle, that the, you know, the the behavior's influenced by the measuring. Um, and the issue for us, I mean, there's, there's certainly an a rate of speeding, right? It's the, where this sort of question last stalled out when we visited it was, we looked at the raw data, we have our own sort of journeyman interpretations of its relevance. We went back to the constable's office and says, you know, look at our standard deviations of speeding. Is this in excess of what you would expect in a similarly situated community? That's where the conversation broke down. The the constable really didn't have much guidance for us there. They they just said we were so unique compared to their other patrol um, duties that they couldn't interpret that for us. So I'm sure there are people that can interpret it, but there was a pretty robust um, data set that we did gather for free, and I'm sure that the constable would refresh it since it's been a year uh, plus since the trailer's last been here, and that's just part of our service arrangement with the constable. Um, and then maybe we can find someone to help us interpret that new data set.
Thank you. That's helpful context.
Thank you. I'm all for that, for data. You all know that. But I'm a finance guy. I like to put stuff in spreadsheets. Um, but but the problem is a procedural problem where you either do a real study or you don't. And by doing a pseudo study or.
But you've, I see you've made a decision. It's on your research and it's your judgment, right? So why wouldn't we be allowed to get more data that we can make? See, I have no data, right? And I, and I am. I try to think my number. So I don't know how much speeding rate. I don't know how many people are swerving because maybe you're driving around the community more than I. That, that's very possible. So, but I would like to have something that I could use from, so that I could do as well, right?
Yeah.
Um, which is what I'm asking.
So, and I haven't mentioned anything yet, but you know, it was huge. Um, I think there's a couple of different questions and perspectives. I think Lee's resolution was focused at the actual statute terms and what gives us the ability to change the speed limit. And I think that's what you were focused on, right? Because you mentioned there was kind of a threat with, you know, that we should gather information or to make that based on the statute.
Yes.
I forget the exact.
Yes.
Um, I think, yeah, yes, of course. But I'm saying, I think that was a crux of the reason you wanted the data was if we were to determine that we would lower the speed limit, we would have the statutory authority backed up by the data that informs our decision to make it.
And we would have the case to make to our neighbors, to our community, why this was important to do.
Yeah. And I think so, so I think there's that's on the table. I think separately is the speed limit just based on everybody's independent judgment, is it the right? My perspective is like, is it the right, is thirty miles an hour the right speed limit for the roads regardless? Like, if you were to go out there and do it from new, would you have done, regardless of the Texas statute and coming out at thirty miles an hour, is that the speed limit that you would have picked for the road? Personally, it's it's not the speed limit I would have picked. I would have picked twenty on the sides, which we can't do, and then twenty five on the main road. Again, that's just a personal driving experience that we all go to, not backed by data, not backed by anything, just experience.
Reasonableness.
Which, I think, so there's two different things here is, one is, what does the statute require us to do for us to be able to justify and actually make that vote under the rules? Because it seems like there are a lot of rules on here. And then two is like, who would make that? It sounds like a lot of people here do want additional data, which I think we like additional data. But I think if we are gonna do the additional data, and I think this is also where Matt was going, if we're gonna do the additional data, I think we should actually make it as official and I'm gonna, you know, just the the correct data as possible, even if there's cost incurred. Obviously, it was a ridiculous cost. We just don't know what the cost would be. But it sounds like if we're going to go down the data path, I would want to be right, and I would think that we would invest the resources to make the correct decision if we wanted, if we do want to do that. Because otherwise, it does just, you know, like Greg had done that study. I I remember that study. I remember seeing the thing sitting out there. And then the constable's office was like, oh, I I don't know. And these are questions that I asked them directly as well when I was meeting with them at the beginning. I said, what do you think about the speed limit? Their response was like, oh, it's whatever you want. And then they have, I mean, literally, that was basically it. And it was, oh, well, what about enforcement? And their response was, and this is their stated policy, is we have a community-based approach focused on education. And that's the constable's office policy that we have a contract with. So I think that opens our whole other.
I want to disagree with you that it's a new community. Sure, I would, I would want twenty five and twenty. But I would also want one other thing, which years ago was, was a P O A rule, and that was, we didn't want anybody parking opposite each other on side streets because you can't get emergency vehicle through.
You literally can't.
And ev- almost every day, I see two trucks on the opposite sides, and I go to the driver's and I say, you have to move one of the vehicles. And they look at me, I go, no, you need to move one of the vehicle. And I explain why, and they go, oh, sorry, I didn't realize that. And the guy will go to the truck and move to the other side.
Is that a, is that a, a P O A? Because in this, maybe this should be a new business item now also. Is that, I I don't know.
That is a policy at one time.
Perhaps it could be an ordinance though.
Well, that's what I was gonna say too. That's what I was gonna say, maybe this should be, maybe that point should be a new business item because I do know that I've gotten a couple of complaints over the last few days for that specific situation. There's a cul-de-sac, somebody's doing some. I've gotten a couple of complaints over the last few days for that specific situation. There's a cul-de-sac, somebody's doing some landscaping work. There's also contractors parked that are doing people's lawns, and they literally couldn't get through.
Right, and it did ha- it actually did happen where an emergency vehicle tried to come down the street and block, and the person that they were coming for that. Because they had.
So, that's a whole.
I don't think you'd have a problem finding a a lot, a lot of support on an ordinance to that effect, but just for the sake of moving the ball down the field.
Well, that's a new business, I was saying, we should add that as a new business, if if that is actually something we should discuss, which I think maybe we should.
I think, I think your comments are great, and and can I offer this to try to move the ball down the field? Um, in the spirit of trying to get some data, as well as this idea of a collaborative traffic study. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but can we try to to vote on twenty five, and it doesn't pass, then talk about the process? Because to me, if there's enough people that have, that have the um, the view today, that they can make that judgment call, fine. And if there isn't, fine, then we take the next steps, but I think to 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 not even have the opportunity to see where we sit today is, I don't know why we serve the benefit.
So we, yeah, we kind of got a motion on the floor, and if you want, you could, I think you'd be allowed to make a substitute motion. But uh before you do that, um, I would offer then to change the the first being resolved uh paragraph in by draft resolution to say that the the city will commission a traffic s- speed study to evaluate and make recommendations on appropriate speeds on streets within the city. Would that solve it for you?
I, from an order, I mean, I I understand Rick's point that committing to the traffic study i- is a huge expense potentially, and it may take time, quite a bit of time. And we're at the mercy of a third party coming to make the decision on our behalf.
And we're not gonna carve this in stone, of course, if we determine that it costs more than we wanted to vote to and do something else, but that's.
That's why I'm confused by the resolutions, it's now live, and I'm I'm.
Right, but we can always do another resolution or override this one later on, that's what I'm saying. We decide we don't like this pathway.
And give me fifteen minutes to look at.
Yeah, I think the the to bring, try to bring, sorry, yes, like you, you're you have a very sort of binary approach of like, we're either doing a full traffic study or we're making a judgment call, I think.
Saying that's the procedure as defined by Texas code.
Speaking for myself, I want a little bit more data, it doesn't have to be a full traffic study to make my judgment call.
Yeah. Even. I'd like to see what they did with.
I think they have, I mean.
I mean, frankly, if you go to twenty five, everybody's gonna ask, why did you do that? What made you do that? Okay, now you've done research.
And right now, I don't have an answer for that.
And I don't either, but if if I look at that data and I see anything that gives me support, I'm gonna go, yeah, I'm going to twenty five.
So if I.
And I'm gonna tell them, this is why I did it.
What I'd like to just try, and I know it may not be successful, is just we can do this every time, I'd like to just try to pass a motion to lower the speed limit to twenty five, and if we're not there, we're not there, and then uh we figure out how much data is enough for whomever, but people interpret data at different speeds, and people make judgments at different rates, and that's totally acceptable, that's great, that's, I I'm comfortable with that.
I'm good with data.
Yeah. Any data. Maybe you'll get, maybe you'll take it up real quick, you'll get fifteen minutes. But but I I I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
I understand.
Say you don't deserve.
Let 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 me suggest this, and if um if you make your motion to reduce our speeds to twenty five and it does not pass, it's not approved, uh then would you be willing to accept my sort of uh reworked resolution?
I think, I think I would look to Rick, Marty, others, and what data do you need and.
What I'm really looking for is, I'm looking for some consensus that we can say that everybody's stuck their hand in the fire on this, and we've all agreed that this will be, at least for now, our path forward.
Yeah, I I think, I think that um, I think that makes sense, um.
Where is that being?
I mean, Matt, even your motion that requires a finding from city council, so that has to be part of your your motion, that city council finds that the current speed is 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 unsafe or unreasonable, right? So whatever that's like statutory language is, you'll need, you'll need that, so that to, so that it's enforceable.
I don't have the language.
Um. The key terms are unsafe or unreasonable, gosh.
Yeah, yes, okay, so I I would like to make a secondary motion to attempt to lower the speed limits that we reduce the speed limits in the neighborhood to twenty five hundred. The language that the current rate of speed is unsafe and unreasonable with the premise that pedestrians are directly offsetting the road, that that's remember the fundamental argument, to my judgment, that it is unsafe and unreasonable. Um, so I'd like to make that secondary motion to lower the limits to twenty five.
I will second that.
Any questions to vote on this?
Wish we had time to review the traffic data from the speed.
How are you doing it right now?
You don't.
Oh, you haven't.
I just ordered it.
Okay.
There is one.
Can we defer from?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's sit on it if you want.
One traffic study, uh one seventy Hills Drive. There were maximum speeds of fifty four and eighty mile per hour rates posted. Um.
Okay, so ba- basically, this is what the data tells me, yeah. This is a cursory look, but I don't like to look at one thing, and that is what's the percent filled and what's the speed limit? And in both cases, it was over thirty percent. Thirty percent of the speed limit is not acceptable.
And that's, that's thirty percent if you, and they saw the trailer.
And if you lowered it, the speed limit to twenty five?
Well, that's the question.
Right.
That's the question, the the question is, is it, is it going to turn to our speed? Now, we won't know that if we go to twenty twenty, go to twenty five, actually, if we go to twenty five, I only go to twenty five and twenty. There's no reason people.
Can't go to twenty without that study.
Yeah.
Side streets?
No.
That's correct.
Either street.
Eighty five, which might be too, also.
Right.
On each my agenda, um. I.
I mean, it's.
Anyway, I'll recall the question.
So the, and and right back to your point, you mentioned, you know, thirty percent are speeding. I mean, regardless of the number of speeders, I mean, everybody could be going the speed limit of thirty, and still, it can still meet the threshold of unreasonable, unsafe.
Right.
Depending on how we, so that, I mean, that's what I, that's kind of, I'm not, I'm focused on speed, because I think that too many people speed. But it's also, I think there's two questions, it's like, okay, well, does something happen, and is that, is is the number of speeders the issue, or is the speed the issue, so?
Well, and I, my premise believes that by reducing the speed, we are giving law enforcement these even better tools to help promote more safety in our neighborhood, um. Yeah.
I think that's what they, they don't want to do. Matt talked about some problems, you know, he does not want to get even before he.
I was gonna, I understand.
Never want to get picked.
I understand.
I mean, to your point, Rick, when I drive by a kid on a bike, I slow down and I move, because it's unsafe for me to pass him at thirty while he's riding his bike two feet away from my vehicle.
Well, the average speed in this study was thirty five mile. That's it, that's what the average speed was for, probably, as you thought.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that tells us.
That's not probably the speed.
I don't want people.
Right, other than, yes, we have an enforcement problem, but I think we all know that.
Problem I'm raising is the
but it's.
Thirty next to a walker or biker or a kid on a bike, learning how to ride a bike on the walkway, I feel is unsafe.
Thirty five times two is.
A lot of people.
Well, and I think most of us also slow down, I mean, we don't have to go thirty, most of us slow down, including passing pedestrians.
Gives you feel it's unsafe to go.
I would do that either way, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's a courtesy, and I thought that.
I don't worry about my speed, but I quickly never go thirty.
But in any event, um, I'm I'm gonna call a question here. That means I I'm calling for a vote. Unless you you decide you want to have more debate.
I mean, I think they also.
Which.
I know. For voting on the substitute motion, on on Matt's substitute motion, I think, right?
Maybe we are.
Right.
So. All in favor to, all in favor of Matt's motion, reducing the speed limit to twenty five? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and again, this is so, I mean, I, it's, it it's, I think, in my perspective, it's regardless of speeders, I feel like it's an unsafe speed.
Yeah.
But I do recognize there is perspective, so I appreciate everybody.
Mm hmm.
Okay. No, I appreciate it too.
Mm hmm.
I wanted to see speed, some speed study, and that was it, and that was fine.
That's good, thanks. That was really a speed study for what it's worth.
It was, it was close enough for me.
That's.
The judgment call, it's, it is a judgment call.
I honestly think that the data taken off of that radar is actually biased towards a more reduced speed, because it's such a large radar machine. Um, so I think that if we did a line study, we would actually see much higher rates of speed. Um, and so I think in in doing it, we probably, we just saved our taxpayers, earned some study dollars. Unless.
Knowing that it was, it was doing that, I thought it would be around five percent speeding limit here, but it was also down, but it's not even bothering to slow down. That's not.
And so I'll just, maybe as a postscript, I think we need to have a conversation with the constable, the enforcement.
Agreed.
I gotta let him lie.
Particularly.
Constable and the constable office.
I remember when 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 he raised his mayor, we used to talk about that, and he was trying to get them to do more, and they came in and said, well, you know, you can't tell, I think Greg's still on, Greg will probably tell you. They they said, we, you know, we're not allowed to do that, that's up to them, it's their judgment, it's not our judgment.
So it's not live till the signs are actually changed, right?
Effectiveness.
It has to be posted.
And so what's the procedure for changing the signs?
Order the signs and replace the thirty mile an hour signs with twenty five mile.
The signs are ours, right?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, and those, remember, if you go back a couple of months, we priced those out, I believe there was eleven identified, and I believe they were about eighty five dollars or something a pop. So in instead of paying a hundred thousand dollars to get a traffic study.
There you go, there's your hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we got it back, um, I got it, I'm gonna go, yes, I wanna see my grandson's his birthday, four days ago.
Sure.
That's a pretty big.
It is a pretty big. Maybe I was like a bull.
Laser. Alright, so then.
I'm glad that's behind us.
The item is close and to be. Which on?
Well, there's no action.
No, I don't, no action.
Item I, J, and K. Trying to see if there's anything else. No. Okay, item I, discuss, consider, and take action on city council tracking of costs and times spent away to public misinformation from third-party sources and needs to expose these costs to the public. I will say that this came up from multiple residents reaching out regarding recent actions and occurrences and threaten illegal action against the city in which we've had to consult with legal counsel and our obvious costs involved in this general use of resources across the city from volunteer time to administrator time to legal costs. And the item is to consider take action regarding the tracking of costs and time spent responding to the dissemination of inaccurate and intentionally misleading information within the hills. I think there's been a lot of stuff, especially particular over the last few days, that have sunk to woes that I don't think that anybody should be dealing with, especially when we're serving the community, there's a lot of volunteers, including everyone on the council, on parks, on the P O A that have been attacked for various reasons, and again, attacks are fine, but we spread false information and then actually incur costs related to the city through those actions, I think that it probably should be tracked and discussed, and and people have requested this outside of council as well. So, and did you, whose agenda item is this?
Yes, mine, um, I would like to see require a motion or discussion today.
Well, it depends what you want to do. If you want to open up the other item.
Yeah, or.
So there's ones in the resolution, ones is.
No, J is the resolution, so if you don't.
Yeah.
Wanted to open that together.
We have.
Together.
Yeah, we'll talk about, talk about I and J together, and then J was discussing, consider and take action regarding a resolution condemning action that wastes city resource and volunteer time of city officials.
If I, if I can read just one sentence from the Texas Ethics Commission resolution uh issued or dated December thirteenth, twenty thirteen, if that's okay?
Yes.
So on the Texas Ethics Commission's website, there's a, there's a resolution dated December thirtieth, twenty thirteen, which states the use of statements sworn complaint has been filed against candidate A where the Texas Ethics Commission is investigating a complaint against candidate A are improper attempts to mislead the public. Um, that's ex- that is exactly what occurred on the P O A's forum about a month ago. And so I think it's really important that we think about overt attempts to hurt the Texas Ethics Commission to mislead the public as we talk about items A and J.
What's become most evident to me is our own um expenses associated to time and energy, um, responding to certain unnecessary, unnecessary
Mm hmm.
communications. I do not want this to be misinterpreted at any reflection of public information. That is a hundred percent always available, may encourage everyone to seek the truth through the correct resources. Um, and that is where an appropriate use of time is um, and can be used, but there has been in my consideration frivolous requests that are training our staff and our legal expense fund um, and taking away from the actual business that we we want to be doing. Um, we have about four weeks between city council meetings and preparing for one and wrapping up a meeting is one thing, and then really leaves us just two weeks in the middle to really hunker down and work on those um, those actionable items. And I don't want to see our city administrator continuously bog down um, and not being able to work on the things that council has prioritized on behalf of our entire community.
Yeah, I mean, time and resources that could always be spent actually serving the residents more directly. And it's right, I mean, and the resolution, to be clear, is about adopting transparency and making sure we fully understand the impact of these situations on city operations, staff, and budget.
Is our motion.
Well, we pull up. I motion to adopt a resolution number two thousand twenty five dash zero zero six, resolution of the city council of the village of Hills condemning conduct that wastes city resources and volunteer time of its city officials under list complaints and misinformation and adopting policies to expose the causes that you want to.
I second.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, first, Mayor Pro Ten, thank you so much for raising this issue up for the council consideration. I I think it's something that's been on our minds and on the community's mind, you know, for some time. And I appreciate you bringing the topic to the table so we can address it. Um, a- as I would see it, your resolution actually does three things. Um, one of which I I wholeheartedly and enthusiastically endorse, and the other two I've got some problems with. Uh, one thing your resolution does is it provides an identification for the council members uh who have a claim asserted against them or a a uh a complaint filed against them that's found based upon their official conduct as council members, that's found to be uh without merit, and the resolution provides that 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 council member can, under appropriate circumstances, seek reimbursement of their expenses uh from the council, from the city. I think that's wholly appropriate, I think it accomplishes the the public purposes that you've identified, Mayor Pro Ten, which are to encourage and support people volunteering beyond the council and serve our community. And I think to some extent, it can also serve as kind of a disincentive to people to file uh complaints or make uh charges against council members that don't really have any factual basis, I think it has that disincentive purpose. Second thing your resolution does in my mind is that um it 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 condemns um speech and behavior uh by uh residents of the community or members of the public. And with all respect, I I don't feel like it's my role as a city council member to condemn or make a final condemnation against uh any member of the public that expresses a. To condemn or make a finding or condemnation against uh any member of the public that expresses a. An opinion about me or the work that I do, even if it's completely untrue, and even if I completely disagree with their point of view. So I think the resolution, uh because it makes a finding that this this type of conduct that you've identified. You're waste city resources and time of city officials, that's a problem for me because frankly, I don't think that's a waste of city time and resources. As distasteful as it is, I think part of our responsibility as public officials is to listen to everybody in our community. Even if we don't agree with them, and even if we think they're totally full of BS. I think our responsibility is to listen and respond appropriately as public officials, and I don't think that's a waste of our time, I think it's really part of our job. And the the third thing that the resolution does that I have a problem with is that it it requires the city administrator to. Track staff time, resources used to respond to frivolous complaints and assign a dollar value to that ton of resources. And frankly, I just don't think that's a good use of Angie's time. I think it calls upon her to make judgments about what is frivolous complaint and what's not frivolous complaint. And it calls on her to make judgments about, well, how much am I going to assign as a dollar value and how much is people's time worth? And what, you know, legal expenses have we incurred that are relevant to what I determine as a frivolous complaint? And I think it's it's not really an efficient use of her time, and I don't think it's appropriate to put on her the responsibility of determining. Which complaints are frivolous and which are not. So for those reasons, there's some in some of the things in this resolution, the indemnification in particular, that I think are really terrific ideas. I wholeheartedly support that, appreciate you bringing that to us. The other two areas that I mentioned, I have a real concern about, and so I'm not going to be able to support the revolution on those grounds. At the same time, I'm not going to oppose the resolution because of the indemnification, so I'm going to abstain and not vote on this resolution.
Would you be open to modifications to those points? Because I'll be honest with you, I had written something different. And this was um a writing by our legal counsel, um so that if there is need for modification. It's absolutely open to.
Can I ask you just one clarification? I think you said a condemnation of person, did you mean a person or a person's behavior? Cause you said a person, I just want to clarify.
Uh frivolous complaints, the city condemns any conduct that wastes city resources and the time of city officials.
So so when you when you made your statement, you said a person, I want to be very clear that the way that that is written. Is not against a person, but against the conduct of a person, there's a big difference.
Not in my mind, and I don't think in the public's mind, with all respect, council member.
In my mind.
To me, that's not, that's not our responsibility. It's not my responsibility as a council member, and I don't think it's this council's responsibility as a body to condemn actions by our residents, whether we agree to them or not.
But there is probably merit to condemning um truly wasteful requests that are just completely redundant. You know, made to waste time, not saying that that has happened yet without seeing her inbox, but there's a potential for that.
And Josh is.
And Mayor Proten, I'm I'm not asking you to.
And I I'm very open to the amendment because this wasn't our first time writing, so.
No, it's and I I just want to go on the record and just clarify that, yes, this was exactly my, these are my words in resolution. Attempting to, you know, um. Understand what Mayor uh Mayor Protem was intending, and so.
That was my understanding too, Council, that's, I thought that's what you're trying to.
Yeah, that is what I, that is, so this is, these are not her words, these are just sort of my suggestions for y'all to discuss here. And it sounds like if there still is enough, um if you're not in agreement about. You know, all of it, I'm happy to take it to get feedback and take back and, you know, bring this back at your next meeting if if you want to. Address some of the issues that um.
I'm, yeah, and I'm. The motion on the table, I am okay with bringing this back to the table with some modifications. Um to make sure that it suits all needs.
You know, if you're willing to do that, Mayor Proten, I think that's a great idea, because this again, to me, is an important issue for me, and I'd love for us to have consensus. If you have a resolution to express any of these topics, then everybody can say yes to it.
That'd be great, well, I withdraw my motion, um and we'll ask that it be postponed to the April meeting. Um with time spent, um and edits being made through our legal counsel.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I hate to ask, but may I be excuse me, I'm minutes early, I need to uh, I think you have one more item, maybe?
Yeah. Yeah, discuss, consider, and take act, so no action taken on that, we're gonna come back later. Resolution, discuss, consider, take action, authorize a resolution, amending city council meeting. And agenda proceeds by adding new sections to be running, repeating, participants on city operated internet based meeting services. One second. Must do it like.
There is, unfortunately, my computers.
Mine's gonna die.
But I didn't read it.
Um, I guess, so we have a. Resolution to adopt amended procedures. The change is related to item, section two, um letter D. Um that in summary would allow our um. Our city administrator, who typically hosts our, the engagement process of our online. Um amendments to decline anyone that um may or may not, may be artificial intelligence. Um and not allowing non-human entities to participate in our meetings.
I mean, I think maybe I should read it, suffer the executive session liberation, all city, all council meetings shall be open to the public in person as required by Texas Open Meetings Act. The city may also choose to let members of the public participate in the meeting through the means of an internet based meeting service. Artificial intelligence, computer software programs, and other non-human entities are not authorized to participate in any capacity. In a council meeting and not authorized to access any of the city's internet based meeting services as a participant. The administrator will deny and or terminate unauthorized attempts by an AI system, computer software program, or other non-human entity. To participate and or access a meeting that would provide a meaningful response to a request for verification. That an attempt to access a council meeting is being made by a human being creates a presumption that the attempt is made by unauthorized AI system. Computer software program or other non-human entity, so that's what it is for reference.
So.
So again, sorry.
I'll move that we approve this amendment.
Second.
So discussion.
I'll just add briefly, um in in the corporate world. This has become a big challenge. Um and the reason is that these AI bots sometimes have. Significant inaccuracies, um and so some law firms have scratched them um from their meetings. We've done, at the company I work at, uh we've done studies on these AI bots and and their transcription efforts and email. Uh as well, and and they're not fully accurate, and and it becomes problematic. When you involve a non-human element that's not fully accurate and isn't being correctly reconciled back to the official record. Um you're adding an element of 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 potential further distortion, so it's 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 actually a. Technology is great, but this is one of the areas of technology that does have considerable downfall and bitfall syndrome.
I mean, I don't know you that, but the city of Boston's experienced issues with public comment period and AI bots. And targeting of the city with regard to. Just general, I mean, I don't even know how you would describe it, overwhelming of resources, taking up time from actual human participants. As well as just general hate speech and savory things that don't belong in in the public meeting from a bot. I mean, we're all for everybody participating, and I think um. I think that this non-human element that is intentionally used to disrupt. Meetings as they've seen in Austin and other places is a real issue.
Yeah.
And that's why they banned it in most investment banks, a lot of firm firms, CPA services firms, a lot of places banned us the specific. Systems.
Yeah, there's just no accountability when the bot is wrong and then presented by a human.
That's correct.
Who's fundamentally accountable for that accuracy.
I mean, that and that's not even an intention, like intentional or not intentional, I mean, there's cities now that are banning it because there are intentional attacks. There are, yeah, there are issues that have banned this from finance, accounting, CPA firms. Because of unintentional errors. All in favor? By all opposed, non-motion carries.
Isn't there something else we could talk about?
You need to talk about. Yeah, okay.
Thanks again.
So the next half hour session of the meeting is commencing, that's good. Uh I would like to talk about new business items and things we need to discuss at the next council meeting, I mean, one being, it sounds like. This parking ordinance. Seems to be something we should evaluate, I know that P O A's experienced some issues with parking in the past, and if this is in action. We can evaluate whether it is a real issue or not, but just anecdotally, I've received complaints regarding. Parking and people not getting through on some of these side streets that are more narrow, so maybe that is something that we should should think about. In terms of a parking ordinance, and just kind of refining that, making sure it's an ordinance that solves our issue but doesn't interfere with. You know, because a lot of the streets, people do need to park in front of their houses and there's not much space during the day.
That's a thing, grab your lawn information later.
Um another item that I think I would like to bring up for discussion is the municipal court. And law enforcement and any other topics related to just general enforcement broadly. For us to all discuss at the council, I know that we've mentioned in the past and we just haven't really had a specific agenda item. And I think that we could talk about having it on this one and we just, we didn't have it on this one, and I think that's something, especially with the discussions around. Law enforcement tickets and perspectives, that we should just kind of flesh out a little more, at least kind of see where we all stand and think about. Does anybody else have anything else they want to do?
Let's see, next meeting is April the eighth, is that right?
Sounds like, yeah. Sounds about right.
Second Tuesday, okay, um just FYI, I've heard, I'm I'm not gonna be in attendance on April the eighth. I'm gonna be traveling on an airplane that day, so I'm gonna miss the meeting entirely, unfortunately.
It may still be going on in the land.
Um, oh, the other thing, and not necessarily related to council meeting, I'll just mention, um I'm, I signed up to go to the Texas Municipal League Region. And meeting in Elgin at the end of this month, and I don't know if anybody else is gonna go or not, but if so, I'm happy to try and sit over there a few months.
That was a twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I think.
I'm not at town, but I would love to.
Okay.
Is it every month they do it or?
I think it's quarterly.
Or, yeah.
And different city hosts said, I think each each quarter.
Haven't decided, but thank you, I appreciate that invitation.
Sure.
Add to the agenda, obviously, I asked for the post-comment of the resolution. I dash zero zero six of was, um. I came across a method, an email that I think has come across to other enboxes too, but we have significant irrigation. But here is necessary, so I might actually have some conversations about getting it done, but it exceeds the threshold. Um for approval, so I think it might need to be work completed and approved.